Our republic relies on the willingness of our citizens to run for and serve in public office. It is a difficult thing for people to do, and everyone that runs deserves our things. Can we give all of the candidates for all of the offices around the political force? The process for each race will be as follows. We'll give each candidate two minutes for introductions, then I'll ask some questions. The plan is to have the responses be one minute. We have a timekeeper here right up front. What are the time intervals?
Thirty seconds until time is up.
Okay, so with thirty seconds, they'll raise their hand. When time is up, they'll raise it. Then when we're done, and we'll ask questions until we run out of time. We have a lot of thirty minutes for each race. When we're done, each candidate will have an opportunity for two minutes to make a closing statement. If at some point in that process I feel like it's necessary to ask a follow-up question in order for us to be able to communicate well, I may do that. I don't plan to do it very often, but if I have. We'll start here and go that way for the opening statements, and then when I start asking questions, I'll just take turns. So, Mr. Malick, would you like to go ahead and start with the opening statements?
Sure. I want to start off by saying thank you to everybody here, thanks for coming out, thanks for being here, being engaged, and the community organizations who are broadcasting this, and welcome to everybody who's here and everybody who's watching. My name is John Malik, I'm a local county prosecutor because I love Idaho, I love living here in Eastern Idaho. I grew up in Idaho, not native of this region, but settled here after about a fact of duty, and this community has been incredibly welcoming to me, and I am 100% invested in our safety, security, and future here in Eastern Idaho. And that's why I'm running. I'm running because I know that I can help us be safer, I can do the job well, I can be our prosecutor through those criminal crimes to keep our county safe, keep our people safe, our families safe, and build a better future for us. I've got six kids, a wife, and I am 100% vested in this community in making sure that there's a future for our children and this future we can be proud of.
Mr. Neal?
Thank you. I'm a local county prosecutor, attorney Randy Neal. In July of 2022, I assumed office. I brought 38 years of experience, had 40 years of experience in the law enforcement of the law. My first career was as a law enforcement prosecutor. I did that for 18 years. And then I put myself through law school. I know you had a question about judgment there, but I became a lawyer, and I've been through that for 22 years now. My first job out of law school was at the Department of Justice back in Washington DC. My second job was here as a prosecutor on the town. That was 2003, so just shy of 10 years ago. And then I became a federal prosecutor down in Utah. I came back every time. The prosecutor was vacated in the office to become one of the judges, and I thought this was going to be a great opportunity to drive the crossfire during back in 2012. But that didn't happen. I took in about 12 years to finally make that jump into public service in that public office, and that's what I've been fortunate enough to serve bottom of the barrel for the last close two years. We gain a different philosophy, which is if you happen to have appropriate sentencing statutes, you come in, you've got to have consequences that deter crime. We were seeing the pendulum in far and far towards rehabilitation. It's an important component, it's an underlying cause of a lot of crime, but we have to have that occurrence, and I think what the community's been concerned about over the last two years has been riders of probation for those very serious crimes. We're working on that, we're heading in direction.
First question, we'll start over there, come this way. So, Mr. Neal, did you or will you continue your private practice as a prosecutor?
Well, I have a paralegal that was working for me for 12 years who doesn't do anything in the practice of law, but I supervise her. She does immigration, petitions, judicial appearances. So, I haven't had any active legal practice, but I just supervise her.
Mr. Malick?
So, I run a couple of defense firms right now, and I've got an opinion from the Ethics Council that I'd have to divest myself of that firm, I really have plans to do exactly that as soon as I'm elected.
Second question, this is to Mr. Malick first. You know, the party that currently has far short its full complement of attorneys, how would you improve the hiring and retention of attorneys through the prosecutor's office?
So, I've already got two attorneys to join me as soon as I'm elected, so barring and quitting, bring us up to five attorneys in the office from three, which would be a massive improvement. Additionally, there are other people I'm in negotiations with. It's too soon to name names, obviously, people have current jobs, and I don't want to out anybody for negotiating with future positions, but there is interest in coming and joining the office. Finally, recruitment is going to be an issue, right? So, going to law schools, meeting with future candidates, and then promising them the training and the future that they need. A lot of attorneys out there just don't know how people place Eastern Idaho as a little, and how many opportunities there are for attorneys out there, so informing them, pushing that message really actively is to make us go and get some fresh talent in as well.
Mr. Neal, how do you improve the hiring and retention of attorneys through the prosecutor's office?
Well, the situation right now is that we just don't have a lot of interest in local law school graduates in the criminal law, and other sectors are struggling across the issues. Here in Idaho, we're seeing shortages in most state prosecutors' offices across the state, but not just prosecutors. Public vendors are seeing the same kind of issues with staff. We don't change attitudes towards public service, and we don't change attitudes that there's honor in our justice. We're going to be struggling with this for quite a while, and that's why really the solution isn't simply hoping you're going to get additional attorneys, it's learning how to handle everything that we handle, a lot of them have it, with staff that have. We've been very successful, good, good in structure by our employees. We had a lot of talent.
This question is, we'll start with Mr. Neal. How do you or will you ensure good case communication with local law enforcement to improve positive case resolution?
Well, we have more communication with law enforcement than I think the office has ever seen, and that's through design, meaning regularly with the chiefs and the agencies. I mean, every other week, the investigators from the sheriff's office. We have a investigator, the first investigator that we've had in 111-year history, who works in furthering investigations and communications between law enforcement and our office in the preparation of cases. So, we're already, there's means there for very close working relationships, and not only in our local law enforcement, but also for our federal partners. You know, I've been involved in developing regional alliances with the local prosecutors. We've also been very effective in developing our partnerships with the federal authorities and federal prosecutors and investigative agencies. Is that the one that, can we get something that varies the two?
I'll be honest with you.
Very good.
Mr. Malick, case resolution, communication with local law enforcement.
So, you know, I've heard from the law enforcement, I've heard from the defense bar, experienced myself, that communication leading up to court hearings, I think just sometimes it's a matter of there not being enough hands in the office is minimal, and it causes churn with police officers, it causes churn with defense attorneys, makes it harder for the court to calendar things accurately, wastes time and effort. And so, there's certain things you can do two weeks out, one week out, a couple of days before court, maybe a day before court, and this isn't reinventing the wheel, we just need to have the hands on staff to do the work, and do that.
Starting with Mr. Malick, how do you manage the prosecutor's office to respond to the challenges stemming from recent growth, including a possible increase in cert packs of crime?
Sure. Violent crime is up, I think 10%, is what I heard from Chief Johnson, and simple fact of matter is that prosecutions for felonies are actually down about 10% over the last year. And that, I think, goes to a number of different things, but first and foremost, you have to have that communication with law enforcement, so they know that they can charge a case, have a responsive prosecutor's office respond to those crimes, right? Rising growth, additional crime, you just have to be responsive and handle the additional workload. Additionally, it just is incumbent on the prosecutor's office to make sure that the work is accurately, promptly dealt with, right? There are cases on the calendar that just drag on and on, because decisions aren't made, and cases aren't closed in a prompt manner, and so they hang on the calendar, and so getting rid of that block for free additional resources to move forward.
Mr. Neal?
All right, and I don't know where the second stat is coming from, but the most recent stats in the bottom account, which is going 2022, or the primary hit down, what Chief Johnson was talking about, stats within Idaho laws, police, department jurisdiction, for specific homicide crimes, and those have been having a flow. So, between September of 2022 and November of 2023, we had no homicides in the bottom account, and then in 2023 and 2024, then of course, we saw a huge spike just recently. The question in here, though, is much broader of how do you deter crime in a growing community? And that's going to be sentencing recommendations and sentencing outcomes. That's where we stay focused on violent crimes and crimes against children. We're in the right direction, but pushing that pedal is going to take some time.
Mr. Neal, in development policies for when to bring charges, from bringing minor charges against District 91 employees for allegedly using public funds to promote a bond, to charging a plea bargaining in more serious crimes, would you consider the impact that those choices have on your counties and the state's budget?
Well, yeah, we didn't spend anything prosecuting that civil case, and the case that was brought to me and investigated by law enforcement was for an outcome of $375 fine. That could have been paid, that wasn't our decision. The decision was the district wanted to bite the $375 fine, and in using $56,000 of legal advice, they didn't find a way to get that case dismissed. We don't just, you know, just because a case is an infraction, we don't just ignore that as, you know, to his, we make the time, we enforce the law, that's our job. It's not my job to decide whether or not that should be against the law. That's a question for the legislators. The legislators here went back and they didn't change a thing. That tells me that we're supposed to enforce that law, and we didn't spend a dime, extra dime on that at all. We had time investing, but we did it as part of our job, and that's going to be the case every time. So, don't tell us about what the council spent, we didn't spend anything extra.
So, Mr. Neal, I did want to ask a follow-up question there, and I'll give Mr. Malick a chance as well. Did I understand your answer to imply that the prosecutor is obligated to charge every crime?
Yeah, it's a judgment call, but tell me the reason in that particular case not to enforce the law. I couldn't find one, and I'll tell you, there was an obvious violation because they didn't follow the advice of their own attorneys. You know, it's been a lot made that I somehow decided there were words they should have used. That wasn't me at all, that was their attorney. They didn't follow their own advice. But, you know, now, our approach has always been to try to remediate election violations. That's just one that got a lot of attention. We have election violations that we deal with all the time. We try to educate, we try to get them remedied, and that particular case, because the investigation went on for several months, it was already done. For us, it was like a traffic ticket. Maybe the $375, learn a lesson, move on. It wasn't our decision to fight.
Mr. Malick, I'll repeat the question. In development policies for when to bring charges, from bringing minor charges against District 91 employees for allegedly using public funds to promote a bond, to charging and plea bargaining in more serious crimes, would you consider the impact these choices have on both your counties and the state judges?
Sure, obviously, you know, we don't live in a post-scarcity society, it's Star Trek, so we don't have unlimited amounts of money to prosecute every single crime, but you have to prioritize, and certain things can be handled administratively. Sometimes it's just not prosecutor's business to get into it, because, you know, say District 91 can handle something and administer discipline themselves, they don't need the county to charge offenses for something that can be handled internally. But building those relationships, working with the community to set priorities, chasing those priorities accurately, efficiently, in the interest of the entire public, not just a select few, is absolutely what I want.
So, Mr. Malick, I asked Mr. Neal a follow-up question, which was, are you obligated as a prosecutor to charge every crime? And I'll ask the same question. I think you addressed it, but if you want to...
No, you're not obligated to charge every crime, however, you do have responsibility, ethically and socially, to do the right thing, and that's something that I've always committed myself to in all my years of military service, public service, across the board, 100% dedicated to doing this, and I'll work with community partners, law enforcement, my office, to make sure that these stuff...
The next question starts with Mr. Malick. What types of crimes do you believe impact the quality of life the most in Bonneville County? How would that impact your decision? Four types of crimes impact. Do you believe impact the quality of life most in Bonneville County?
I mean, violent crime and drugs, I think, all of them are having a big impact. I see it every day in my job, and it's, you know, it's horrific, and people are concerned. They're concerned about pressures on growth, and what that's doing to their communities. They're concerned about drugs and what those are doing to transphobia in our community, and those are absolutely two of the major priorities in criminal prosecution that I'll pursue. So, with violent crime, obviously, working with law enforcement to make sure that perpetrators of justice and appropriate sentences are sought, and that with resources availability, we're not forced to be in a position of having to take plea bargains on very serious offenses when we could take it to trial, preserving resources for those most serious offenses. And then with direct crimes, obviously, making a priority to prosecute traffickers and, if appropriate, give community rehabilitation programs to assist growth.
Mr. Neal, what types of crimes do you believe impact the quality of life the most in Bonneville County, and how would that impact your decision?
Our number one interest is crimes against children, especially those crimes involving exploitation or sex crimes against children. Those are our first priority. The second priority is violent crimes, and especially those situations which involve guns and drugs. As you're aware, we started an initiative before this latest go-round, six months in advance of seeing the gun crimes that we did, which was a cooperative, you know, effort by both the federal prosecutor, the U.S. attorney, and myself, to prioritize these unlawful possession of guns. Nearly every one of these violent crimes involving guns hadn't been either stolen or unlawfully possessed firearms. We started the initiative to get more severe sentencing outcomes two months in advance, so we saw that coming. Fentanyl, I was, you know, part of leading the charge on the drug trafficking change that occurred this year, that was a good change to create these minimum barriers for that.
Mr. Neal, what do you think is the most effective way to deal with low-level drug offenders in so-called victimless crimes?
Yeah, of course, those aren't victimless by any stretch of the imagination. What we usually do is if it's a simple possession case, then we will put our treatment options first and foremost, because if you treat the underlying problem, then hopefully you're not going to see continuing crimes. So, initially, if somebody is caught with a small amount of simple possession, they'll go on probation, they'll try to get them any treatment that they can. If that continues, then we'll see typically a treatment court, either a drug treatment court or a wood court, those who show some effectiveness at reducing recidivism. Ultimately, though, they have to know that higher or lower prison is a possibility, and so when we start talking about felony drugs, which is methamphetamine and all, you can't just be reducing your life back to misdemeanor. It sends the wrong message. People have to know that these kinds of drugs lead to crimes that are something that creates victims in our community. So, that's our, kind of our way that we graduate the response to even simple possession cases.
Mr. Malick, low-level drug offenders.
For low-level drug offenders, obviously, you have treatment and education are pretty critical in dealing with those offenses. What I've seen is that these cases start when the kids are very young, and a lot of kids at this point aren't aware of just how possibly dangerous certain substances could be, including marijuana. And so, they get introduced into the drug culture very early on in their lives, and that needs to be addressed with education, using probation, human probation, and education programs, not get kids on the right track so that hopefully cut this problem off at the source, right? It's not the man, it's going to be less reason to bring drugs into this area. But obviously, treatment's a priority, and documenting it so that if there is an issue, it progresses over the course of an individual's life, and makes it an opportunity to ramp up consequences and deal with the issue more aggressively later.
We've got time for one more question, and then we'll do the closing statements. I'll say closing, all right. Mr. Malick, what would you do to support broader goals of lower recidivism and rehabilitation?
I mean, there, you've got to work with community partners first and foremost, so that's something that our drug courts do, it's something that are, it's always pushed in the community to have rehabilitation programs, treatment programs, work programs. One of the major issues we have is a lack of mental health capacity, so that's something we need to address urgently, because, let's say, like, see, the drug company, you have folks who sell Medicaid for mental health issues that get addicted to drugs. So, working with community partners to increase the capacity there for treatment, I think is just absolutely essential, and that's something that, you know, my mom ran a community health center when I was growing up, and so I learned on the ground how important those programs are, how central that primary care is, both on the mental health and the treatment fronts, and it's something that we're all positioned to work with the community to increase resources that actually we can, assuming you can buy back.
Mr. Neal, lower recidivism and rehabilitation?
Well, I mean, they need to be, obviously, data-driven, whether or not we are seeing a lower recidivism. Treatment courts say that it's proven, we are seeing a tremendous number of treatment facilities that have opened up and are available to the community, and it seems like the courts bend over backwards trying to give folks that are suffering an addiction, every opportunity. The folks that are driven by addiction is just one subset, the criminal element. I mean, what we're dealing with that truly affecting our community is there's a small group of those who are criminal thinkers, and that's not, no progressive ally is going to deal with that. The thing that asks me, though, is protection society, deterrence, and just punishment for a criminal, asks me consequences for those folks that have criminal thinking. That's a small group, but they create 90% of problems.
Two minutes for closing statements. It's a big, a little, I say closing, all right. Mr. Neal?
Well, if you think about it, so the prosecutor's attorney has one of the largest law firms here in Eastern Idaho. He has one of the largest numbers of clients, you know, I have 140,000 clients, and I'm trying to act in their best interest every day, and if you're going to hire an attorney, you want an attorney with experience and proven skills, and over the last 40 years, I've shown that, not only just in the number of successful prosecutions, but we're talking about skills that a lot of people don't have, like how to handle a jury trial. I've done two dozen of them. Those are things that are going to be important as we move forward, because we've got some major pieces, more pieces, more homicide cases than Bonneville County has probably ever seen at the single time. So, you've got to look, that's all I'm asking you to do, if you're going to hire an attorney, you want one respected, you want one serious, and so look at the qualifications, it's that simple. And, you know, the reason I'm doing it, the reason I'm willing to step forward and be your attorney, is very simple. There is honor in the fight for justice. I love the job. I love everything about the job, but I love the job because I have the honor of representing you in the course of law, being your voice, and being the voice of the victims. I want to continue that. What we're doing now is we're changing sentencing outcomes, but that takes more than just the prosecutor. I don't have half the control that people think I have over that kind of thing, but we're pushing the pendulum. It's a lot of back, and we're getting pushed back from that, but over time, with diligent effort and staying the course, we'll get better, and I appreciate your love and your interest.
Mr. Malick, two minutes for a closing statement.
Justice is something I've orchestrated my entire life around, so I did 14 years in the military and on active duty. I'm still a air guard, I'm a State Justice Counsel for the Board of Air Guard. I've been charged with large sex crimes and serious felonies when I was a JAG on active duty, and that, and case terrorists for our national security, my two main jobs. I've been an attorney for nearly a decade, I've been working in criminal justice for over a decade, and I have a deep love of justice, and this community, and I'll work every day, my utmost, to serve this community effectively in great justice and security. You can hold a bottle of beer. Awkward pause. So, again, I can't read it, this is my family's home. My wife, six kids, our dog, my wife's horses, we live here. The outcome of this community, the outcome of this election, I think is important to all of us, and I'm here to ask for your vote on May twenty-first, and I appreciate your time, and thank you again for being here and for your support.
President Ballack. Thank you, gentlemen. County Commissioners are next.
The candidates for county commissioner are Michelle Mallard, Alan Steele, Deborah Haggin, and Eric Illyer. We'll start with two minutes for candidate introductions, and then we'll start asking questions, one minute answers. Let's start here, and words in that way, we'll do it that same way when we do those. Michelle Mallard, would you like to start?
Hi, I am Michelle Mallard. I'm a generation I- hole, and I have all the values that that applies. I've traveled miles from where my great-grandparents homesteaded, and within a few miles of where I was raised. Having worked for the county of Bonneville, the state of Idaho, and the federal government, I can tell you I'm a big supporter and fan of the mature government. I'm a fiscal equal and social conservative who has voted regularly in Republican primary for over the last twenty years in Idaho. We were out of state for a time with my husband's military service. I'm probably alone on this panel in having voted for Ronald Reagan. I'm a recently retired judge, magistrate judge, currently in private practice here in town, so I'm trying to work full-time and run a campaign. I'll be glad when this is over. As magistrate judge, my diet, my job on a daily basis was to protect the constitutional rights of every single person who came into my courtroom, and I took that all and considered it sacred, even if it resulted in some difficult situations for me. As a judge, I made many difficult decisions on a regular basis. Very few were appealed because I was transparent, reasonable, and stayed well within the bounds of the law. The ones that were appealed were upheld by the Supreme Court, the Idaho Supreme Court, I never held a US Supreme Court case. You can count on me to stay within the lines, to stay within the law, to be predictable and conservative in my decisions as your county commissioner. I have been married to my husband Kelly for over forty years, he's here tonight, and I appreciate his support. We have three children, all who wish they lived in Bonneville County, but do not. However, they do bring our six grandchildren to Idaho Falls on a regular basis every summer. My son has been deployed twice to Afghanistan with the Army and British Airborne in a combat role between he and my husband, they have had three deployments. My family does dad and mother service here.
Mr. Steele, two minutes, and we have changed time people.
All right, I'm Alan Steele. I grew up out in the Austin area, started driving tractor before I reached the pedal soon. So we grew up on the farm, grew potatoes and grain. When I was almost done with school, I came back to my dad and said, hey, I'm ready. And I had two brothers farming with my dad, and he took him over. So I didn't get to continue farming, but I still did go out, get out there and get my hands dirty every year. I'd go out and take hours, enjoyed that very much. So in ninety-five, I started, when I couldn't do it on the farm, I actually started a lawn mower job, a little power. Many of you will remember that, seeing a lot of lawnmowers and we did a lot of repairs. I enjoyed that a lot also, but then I found my new love that I have now, which is selling guns. I've still got the pond, I've been running it fifteen years, and I enjoy that. I don't get those shoes much as I used to, but someday I will. Got three daughters, we have a beautiful wife, which is here tonight, married her thirty-one years. It's been an awesome time, it's been so awesome now, just like everything else, but for the most part, we're all good. We've got four grandkids, two twins, three years ago, today. They're doing great, and everybody's all. I just want you to know, I am here to work for the people. There was a one point, I was asked how committed I was, I'm very committed. I quit a TSA job, federal job, had insurance, and I remember to do this. I'm just glad to be here, thank you.
Mr. Steele, two minutes.
All right. I am the mother of five, that's kind of my claim to fame. My youngest is graduating from high school, and so she is heading off to Utah State, and I saw a gentleman in the audience with Utah State shirt, there he is, so. And then, so now I have the time to commit to this, to the commissioner's spot. Just a little bit about me, my dad was raised in southern Idaho, and my mom was raised in northern Idaho. They married and moved across the border and raised six children on a dairy farm there, so I'm a dairy farmer's daughter. I was active in high school in student government, served an LES mission over in Hong Kong. My, came back, married my husband after we graduated, and we moved our, we moved our small, our small family over to Shanghai, China, so we lived overseas for a while, and then we relocated back here to Idaho Falls. So we've been here almost two decades. This has been a beautiful place to raise our five children. We've spent a lot of time on football fields and at tennis matches and at music concerts, and so you can tell that I have been very active with my, with my children and my family. I was the mom that was the first one there and the last one to leave, and I promise you that as your next county commissioner, I will do the same thing, I will be committed and I will be the first one there and the last one to leave. Just a little bit about me, I, my formal education is I have my social work degree, and I'm a licensed social worker from Idaho and Utah. My husband and I are entrepreneurs, we started a small business while we lived overseas in Shanghai, and then we actually, and then we have a small business here, we buy, sell, and manage properties. I'm also serving as a trustee on the Bonneville County Library District, and so I've worked there a little bit. So hopefully the questions will let me explain a little bit more about myself later.
Mr. Neal.
Hi. My name's Eric Illyer, and I'm a lifelong resident here in Bonneville County. I'm a sixth generation, my family's been here for over six generations. They moved here in eighteen eighty-one, before Bonneville County even existed. They homesteaded in the Colton area, just north of Idaho Falls, and I have the pleasure and lucky enough that I still live out there on the family farm. My family, in my yard, I actually have a horse-drawn plaza, where the original plaza was used to carve out our canals to clear back in the eighteen hundreds so that we could start farming this area. I call myself a hobby farmer, I have twenty-five acres that I farm. I am a third-generation police officer here in Bonneville County. My grandfather worked for the Idaho Falls Police in the fifties, sixties, seventies, my dad in the seventies through the early two thousands, and I started in nineteen ninety-nine and worked twenty years in law enforcement, most of it here in Bonneville County. The majority of my time I spent in investigations, working as a detective, and the last few years that I worked for the sheriff's office, I was assigned full-time to the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, and I aggressively went and investigated and took those people that are harming our children and took them off the streets and put them in jail. Along with that, I've owned a construction business for over twenty years, and I've owned residential homes, I've done several remodels, and then I have worked in the, I bought properties and rebuilt them and plowed and flatted and done those type of projects. So that's a little bit about myself, and I appreciate you guys being here.
The first question, we'll go with Mr. Steele, we'll just go this way and finish here, Mr. Mallard. So the question is, and it will be the same question for all of you. Are you familiar with the budgeting philosophy of the current commissioners? Do you agree or disagree with the current budget process, and what would you change? And this is one.
Yes, I do know some of it, and yes, I do agree. A lot of it is they, they have saved, they pay cash for everything, they are not in debt, which is very important, so yes, that's something that I want to continue. It's very important to keep the county out of debt, and also save the money for the future. I know they have got enough money to go for nine months in case of emergency, so that's very important to do.
I'm going to suggest, Mr. Neal, something just kicked on. You may want to consider getting a little closer to the mics than you were two minutes ago, that's, that's a little like. So, budgeting philosophy of current commissioners, do you agree with or disagree with the current budget process?
Okay, the process, the county commissioners meet with the department heads, and that's going to be coming up in the month of May, and so, and that's public, so I encourage all of us to be a part of that and to be able to be educated on each of the department needs. And then they work with Penny and with Ron, and who kind of let them know what, what kind of monies they're working with, and then they, they take a look and they, they see, okay, these are the needs of the departments, and they talk to the department heads and see where they, you know, just what will keep the lights on, I believe, and, and then as they kind of balance it out, they'll, they'll see, well, it looks like, you know, we can spend a little bit more money here and a little bit more money there. Just out talking to a few people in this campaign, there's, there's a real need for us to spend some money on infrastructure, and so hopefully we'll be able to cut some monies here in different departments to be able to fulfill that need.
Mr. Neal, are you going to repeat the question or, you know, we're going to pay. So, yes, I absolutely agree with the way the county commissioners have been, their philosophy of running a budget. Why? Because they've been very conservative and they've been good stewards over our money. We're not in debt, and that's a good thing. Sometimes we may not have the best of everything, but we manage well, and we've done a good job of being able to be stewards of the taxpayer money with the current commissioners, so I absolutely do agree with that. I'm very much a conservative, and I believe in spending our money wisely, and one of the things that we do need to do, infrastructure was just mentioned, and that is a huge thing, and that we are lacking in and we need to improve on. But also, we have an issue with our law enforcement and retaining our officers and keeping them, and so one of the things that I believe we need to do is try and help reallocate some of those resources and those monies and those funds so that we stop throwing money away by losing officers to other agencies.
Ms. Mallard, are you agreeing with the budget philosophy of the current commissioners? Do you agree or disagree with the current budget process, and what would you change?
I understand, because I've been a part of it for many years, I've had input into the court's budget and participating in that process for a long time. I agree with their philosophy, they've been very conservative and too moderate in the black in Bonneville County, and so that is a super impressive approach to our county officials. We do have to make sure, it's critical that our county officials understand that they cannot be obstructive in their decision-making, that they collaborate and see the input of all stakeholders, providing them with creative solutions that will pay forward into the future instead of short-term solutions that create long-term problems. So, and we've got to have those plans followed as the commissioners change, but otherwise our budget is a great shame.
Next question, we'll start with Ms. Haggin. What one part of county government would receive more attention if you were?
Well, I'd probably go with the law enforcement. I believe that that's the, that's the department that uses the most budget, and then just as I've worked and as I've job-shopped with the county commissioners, I believe that's, that's the big one. A close second right there is planning and zoning, so I think right there.
Mr. Neal? Yeah, just expand a little bit on the law enforcement. I totally agree, right now, law enforcement is where they're lacking. Over the last several years, the sheriff's office has lost over fifty deputies to the Idaho Falls Police, the state police, and like out to the side. The reason is, is because of that. And so we hire people and we train them, and it costs about a hundred thousand dollars to train an officer, and then they go down the hallway to make three or four more dollars an hour, and we need to stop doing that. It's like, every time we hire an officer and lose them, it's like they're taking a dump truck and driving it off the cliff, it's a waste of money. So we absolutely need to reallocate those resources so that we can better fund them and keep them. Right now, they're short several deputies, they're having a hard time finding good candidates, and they have mandatory overtime. The jail's been in mandatory overtime for quite some time, and the patrol division is very, very close to being put into mandatory overtime.
Ms. Mallard?
Yes, I think Sheriff Holt would dispute some of those numbers and say that there are four officers who have left the county, and one of those has come back in the last couple of years. The commissioners have done a great job in public safety and increasing salaries for law enforcement over the last couple of years. I would continue on that path and continue to support law enforcement as I have throughout my entire career. But what I think we, we have to, and Sheriff Holt has done great things with a limited budget, I have a great deal of confidence in him. I think one of the areas that could be improved upon in the county is economic development. We need to invest in our community teams and add the energy sector, medicine, and tourism. These are the sectors that keep our community humming, that bring a tax base, we diversify that, we develop that, and we all end better off.
Mr. Steele?
Okay. So I would agree also with our sheriff's department, there are some differences though. I did talk to the sheriff and also the commissioners. Four or five years ago, the deputies got an eighty to ninety percent raise. The last two consecutive years, five percent each year. So they are getting closer to what the sheriffs or the police department is getting. But yes, we do need to increase it some more. There has been five that left the last couple of years, two have come back. It is important, then we need five more deputies for the note management in the jail, we need at least five more on the ground, on the streets, and I'd say another five after that. So yes, it is very important that we, we have our sheriff's office.
Okay, the next question, I believe we're starting with Mr., did I read that right? Okay, I was worried I forgot. What do you see as the most pressing needs for infrastructure or capital projects in the county?
Well, for one, we need a bi-. Well, for one, we, we need a five-way. And that was something that was, uh, originally thought of several years ago and was not put into, the, it was not put into place. And we're lacking them big time. You know, it used to be 15, 20 years ago, if people lived here, that week of Christmas, we wanted to avoid being out on the roads uh, because it was so crazy and that's how it is every single day. Because we didn't properly, uh, execute, uh, some of the issues with our infrastructure, now we're put into a position where there are certain, uh, locations and intersections that we knew about in the past, that now we're having to look at buying, buying homes and kicking people out of their homes, uh, also that we can widen our roads and better our infrastructure. And so, uh, that's where we're really left. We do believe we most definitely need to be able to, uh, widen and make some of our roads a lot bigger and we need a five-way.
Ms. Mallor, infrastructure or capital?
Well, clearly roads. I mean, we've all seen what's happened. And 40 years ago, there was a plan we paid for that made 49th and 45th five-way roads. Those rights of way were not protected. So now we're going to be forced to go further out, um, to 55th to have a five-way beltway around Bonneville County. And we also have to have a plan that protects those rights of way from developers 40 years from now when none of us are going to be county commissioners. So I think that's really important. The Bonneville Metropolitan Planning Organization has been revived recently and they are doing great work in creating a beltway with lots of community partners, including the Department of Transportation, which pays for about, I think, 97% of our road costs here in Bonneville County.
Mr. Steele.
Yes, I agree also with the infrastructure. The way our growth is, um, we've got so many apartment buildings going up, they can't handle all the vehicles that are out there. So we've got to look at our roads, kind of, they are looking at them and working on them right now. They're doing the county line, they're doing 45th East. They've got other projects in the works. But that's, we've got to look into the future. Sorry. I hate that myself. Because the future is where it's going to be. We can't just plan for the next one or two or three years. We've got to look into at least 15 to 20 years and get a plan. Otherwise, we're going to never get out of this situation.
Alright, um. It was my phone call, there you go. So I've actually been, uh, touring, uh, a few of the buildings that the county owns. Spent some time at the jail with Lieutenant Houston and, um, been very impressed with the capital project that's happened there and the finishing and the addition that's happened there and that will actually be beneficial to the county. The commissioners have also been extremely busy out of the new fairgrounds out south of town. And that's been impressive with the buildings that they've built out there and, um, and the, the way they've developed the land, um, the usage of the buildings. And then, yes, of course, I need to, um, second what's been said about the roads and, and will work with planning and zoning and, uh, and make that happen.
This will be the last question before, before the closing statements. And we're back, back to the beginning. So, are county land use regulations and permitting processes doing enough to ensure the public interest? Or are they two of those?
Well, I mean, first of all, we want to make sure that, that the county is business-friendly and I think we do have a reputation for being business-friendly. We do have a new, um, planning and zoning director, I've talked to him, he's doing great work. But we do need, we do need, uh, an area of impact put in place and I think we will have that before the current commissioners leave. There's some legislation that's made that possible. But that area of impact would stop the patchwork, create a uniform and predictable building guideline for everyone and we really, we really need that.
Mr. Steele.
Yes, I agree. Also, um, we need to get with the planning and zoning. I have talked to a few people and it has taken a little bit longer than it should to get their permits and these things. So that's something I want to look at, is why, why does it take two or three months sometimes to get a permit done? We should be able to just look at it and get it approved and, and so they can move on. Because, you know, they're in business to make money. If they can't, can't build that building, then they're not making anyone. So I, I think that's important, that we need to work with the other commissioners and planning and zoning and continue that work.
Are county land use regulations and permitting processes doing enough to ensure the public interest? Or are they two of those?
Well, um, just, just I've started on the planning and zoning meetings, um, that's held monthly and then it's, uh, I feel like they're doing a great job. I'm impressed with Austin Black and his team, um, Shell and the research that they, that they do. I think they work really well, the staff there, um, with the builders and, and, uh, and they allow for public comment and I, I think that's, that's healthy. I've got a comprehensive plan here, um, it hasn't been updated for 11 years. I think that that needs to be, um, that needs to be updated so that builders and, and different, um, people who are interested in the way that the land use is, um, is used. I think that it needs to be online so that they can go in and they can do the research they have, um, on, online there, so that they're clear on, on how things are, will be regulated.
Mr. Hillier.
So, you know, here in Bonneville County, we're one of the fastest-growing communities in the nation. Do I think that we're, um, doing a perfect job? No. Do we have room for improvement? Yes. Some of those areas that I see where improvement is, uh, with some of our, our mass, uh, the huge parking complexes. One of the problems that I see is that we have all this building going on and there's not enough parking for them. So you have people that live in residential neighborhood, single-family homes and then multi, uh, multiplexes are coming in and they're only giving, you know, two parking stops, two parking stalls per unit. And it's just not enough. There's no room for people to come visit or anything like that. And so I think that we could do, uh, we could do some things to improve that and put some other restrictions on them so that they have to provide more parking and make it so it's not as congested and crowded and worse for the other single-family homes.
Two minutes for closing statement, we're just going to say more of the ban, so it's Mr. Steele. And this, this is Steele.
So I just want everyone to know that I am here for you and I'm here for people. I know I've said it, I've said it too much probably, but I really am. That's how I've been, my two businesses, successful. I was able to listen to the customers, um, and help them with their issues and their problems. I actually went and had a lot more trouble. Now I just listen to see what others want and get a order. That was a lot easier. I really enjoy working. My wife says I work way too much. I have, like I said before, I worked for TSA part-time plus I had my business. I love my family and I love being with them. This is a great county. This is where I grew up, this is my home, this is where my kids are growing up, my grandkids are growing up. I want to keep it safe for them and also those after them. So I want you to know that I am here to work as hard as I can and do what I can to help this county grow and continually be a place for everyone to want to be. Thank you.
Ms. Hattler.
Okay. So I've heard of, a lot about planning and zoning and, uh, budgeting. But I want you to know that the list of duties and responsibilities for county commissioners filled this whole page. So they, um, they oversee a lot of different departments and I feel like that the diversity that I've had over my lifetime will help me to relate better, uh, to all the department heads. Uh, they came, they come in and they report regularly to the county commissioners and they talk about their current projects, their future needs, and their budgetary roles. And, um, and I feel that, um, that, that my job and, and the things that I've experienced over my lifetime will help me to relate better, um, or help me relate to, to them. I also want to be in a position where I can fight for our freedoms. Four years ago, I saw our freedoms taken from us and I stood up and I fought to remove the mandates and to, uh, preserve our, our freedoms. And I want to be in a position to be able to, to stand up for those. Our freedom of speech without censorship is important to me and I want to, I want to be, to, I want to be in a position to protect that and our other constitutional rights. I want to preserve our family-friendly community. I've raised five children here with my husband and we've been happy and I want that for the next generation. Um, I've been able to spend some time with the county commissioners over the last four months now and I'm impressed with the family that, that they created there and I want to be a part of that family. So, uh, please take, um, a look at me. I've touched a little bit upon, um, a few things and you can find out more details on my campaign website, Facebook, Deborah Ford County Commissioner and I would appreciate your vote on May 21st, thank you.
Mr. Hillier.
It's been 30 years since we've had, um, this drastic change in the commissioners' office. You might see one commissioner, you know, here or there, they've retired. None, this is a big deal. And the question that everybody needs to ask themselves is who's the best qualified to be able to do this job? Who has the experience, the knowledge, and the expertise? And 10 years ago, I got asked to run for county commissioner and I thought about it long and hard, I gave it a lot of consideration. And, you know, I've, I've worked for the Forest Service, I've spent 20 years in law enforcement, I've been a, a, a small business owner, uh, a builder and developer, all for 20-plus years. Well, 10 years ago, I felt like, you know, I just didn't know enough and I didn't have the experience and the knowledge to do that. And so I've taken another 10 years to become involved and to learn all those areas. And, and I feel that I am very qualified to do that. The, the county commissioners oversee several different areas. And, um, you know, my farming background and, uh, having worked for the Forest Service and dealing with, uh, parks and recreation, law enforcement with our public safety, um, and, uh, and being a builder and dealing with planning and zoning and road and bridge, I, I understand the needs of our county, I know what we need and, uh, I'm very familiar with it. And I, I come from that family of service, you know, for the last, since the 1950s. My family's been giving service here to Bonneville County and I'd like to continue to do that. I appreciate your, your vote on May 21st.
Thank you. I have decades of institutional knowledge of Bonneville County, their budgeting process, their courts, the relationships, the leaders in the county. I know where their offices are, I knew where they were 10 years ago and where they were 20 years ago. I have got the knowledge and experience to hit the ground running as a county commissioner. I also have decades of experience as a federal and state prosecutor. I understand the issue of public safety. I've worked closely creating new solutions to problems with Sheriff Holt and his officers. I've been in the jail many times. I have an up close and personal view of a serious crime in our community having read police reports and listened to evidence from law enforcement officers and others every single day for 12 years. This is a complex job. This binder is an explanation of how the budgeting process works. Where the money comes from, where it goes, how you can spend it, how you can't spend it. We want reserves, but by law, we can only have so many reserves. You have to know these things, these are complex issues that have to be addressed. With me, you have, when you vote for me, it's a vote for excellence that has been demonstrated by the many jobs I've had, by many experiences I've had. I was hired by US Attorney Tom Moss, who was appointed by George W. Bush out of a field of 200 applicants. I am qualified for this job and prepared for this job in a way that allows me to give the gift of my decades of experience to Bonneville County as a county commissioner and I would appreciate your vote so that I can do that.
I'm convinced that the county commissioner's job is probably the most difficult in, in Idaho politics and you have four people who aren't intentionally trying to get it. Let's, let's give them all around.